Good morning. We'll call the committee, the whole meeting to order for June 26, 2024. Oh, we are doing the pledge. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call please.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mrs. Burdick.
Here.
Mr. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Seer.
Present.
Mr. Dummick.
Here.
Mr. Fanton.
Here.
Mrs. Hatchet.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Havy.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Ricky.
Here.
Mrs. Ricket Swales.
Here.
Mrs. Root. Mr. Rumfelt. Mr. Stocken. Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, so the one major agenda item today is discussion, continued discussion of a Olean area transportation system and potential partnership with Allegheny County and Cataragus County and the city of Olean. What I'm gonna do now is introduce everybody that's up here at the dais, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie Whitwood, and she's gonna give us kind of a refresher on how we got to where we are, and then we're gonna open it up for discussion. I know the board had a number of questions that we felt maybe were best answered by the city and the county, Cataragus County, city of Olean and Cataragus County, as opposed to Ardent, and so we'll get the opportunity to do that. We'll have a good discussion and go from there. So, for everyone watching, to my right is Gwen Cooper. She's the Mobility Manager for Ardent Solutions. Carrie Whitwood is the Executive Director of Ardent Solutions. To her left is Andy Burr, Chair of the Cataragus County Board of Legislators. To his left is Jack Searls, Cataragus County Administrator, and to his left is Bill Aleo, Olean City Mayor. Did I get all that right? Pronounced it all right? Okay. That's a lot of pressure. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie. She's gonna get us up to present bay, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, everyone, for having us back. And a couple weeks ago, Gwen and I came and shared with you information on not only the Allegheny County public transportation system, but Oats as well, and what is happening in that Olean area transit system that at the end of December, that system will no longer be operable. And so, what we were sharing with you was some information and some opportunity and some potential to look at a regional system, to look at if Allegheny County can partner and be part of that regionalization. Since that meeting, we have had numerous conversations with New York State DOT and others, but I think today, and having, thank you, gentlemen, for being here, I think this is a great opportunity to have your questions answered more fully, because we weren't able to answer some of them. So, I appreciate us being here.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess let's preface this whole conversation by saying, it's been expressed to us, and it's true in our case as well, that we need to make a decision on this, because on the one hand, if Allegheny County is going to, and Ardent Solutions is gonna tackle this project, we've gotta get on it now, because it would involve negotiating with the operator, transition of workforce, transition of capital. There's a lot of work to be done. And Cataragus County, right now, is in agreement, if I'm correct, with the city of Olean to keep that system going until the end of this year. Okay. So, that's the case. So, we're on the clock with that. If this board does not have the appetite to do this, we need to let these people know, because they actually would have even more work to do to get themselves in a position to be able to continue providing service when we get to the first of the year. So, I think Ardent did a pretty good job, very good job, of detailing what this partnership would look like, expansion of our services. But there were some questions from members of the board that I think would be best answered by the gentleman to my left. Would anyone care to ask those questions? If not, I can try to remember and paraphrase. Mr. Fant?
Yeah, I just question, what's the, what's the real reason that Cataragus County doesn't want to take over the leadership in this whole transportation project? Because what was presented to us for our transportation project, we as a county stepped up. We put a lot of money in the system that we weren't supposed to be able to, or supposed to have to do, but we did it. So, what's the reason that Cataragus County is not willing to, at least says that it's a, you know, you'll get your money back, you'll get your money back. Well, we know for a fact that normally you do, but it takes a while. So, why is there a question about Cataragus County not taking it over? I mean, you can, it's a win-win for you guys, because you've got room to expand that whole system if you wanted to, and so, I just don't, I haven't fully, fully engaged my mind as to why we should even be talking about this. So, I appreciate your coming over, but I personally can't see myself going along with our county as a support if Cataragus County doesn't want to do it. So, thank you for coming.
Andy, you wanna try to tackle that one?
Okay, thank you for the comments. I appreciate you allowing us the time to come and address your board. Really, there's basically four reasons why we've been reluctant to do it on our own basis. The first was timing. I mean, when, when we found out about Olean's decision, you know, their intention was to close the program, and so, when we had had some conversation with the transportation consultants, we were just, you know, very alarmed by the quick timeframes and the ability to turn this around relatively quickly. So, in the meantime, we do have a stopgap arrangement through the end of the year with Olean to at least be able to preserve the system. And then, really, I think the other issues are, Cataragus County has never had any staff or personnel that had any real experience with this, and so, Jack's concern, he can speak to it himself, was that we really didn't have a depth and background as far as how to run a service of this nature. And so, that was the second reason. And then, really, the other two in our consideration was, we believed that by putting a system together, I mean, when you think about the routes that you have, some of which already come into Cataragus County, we thought that there was a natural synergy that would exist that could basically improve the system, improve the routes, certainly improve the depth of the transportation system by being able to partner with the neighboring county. And then, lastly, we think that the financial system, the economies of scale and all the associated benefits with Ardent and, you know, the good work that Allegheny County has had and the good reputation of success that you've had running this program, we believe that there were some pretty significant financial beneficiaries, benefits to the system whereby we could, you know, be stronger together financially and have a little bit more robust financial profile. So, those were the four reasons that we had, and if Allegheny County decides that this is something they don't want to do, I mean, we would like to have at least some intention of your interest, because if, you know, if the answer's no, and the board is not interested in entertaining this, we need to start tomorrow to do this ourselves. But we still sustain that the best answer is doing this together for the financial benefits and the ridership synergies.
We contract with Ardent. Why don't you just contract with them? Why do, yeah, why do we have to be the middleman?
We certainly could. I think we talked a little bit, Carrie, do you wanna just talk about some of the synergies that you had discussed with us as far as what together looks like rather than separate?
Sure, and I think initially, the Olean area transit system does not have monies for mobility management. Where in Allegheny County, we have put that into our application, the 5311 application. So, that would be, until that application comes out, that would be, there's no monies in there yet. But I do think when you're looking at, I would say, the efficiency of it, to have one call center would save money and be more efficient. I mean, I do think there's opportunity. That, could they contract separate with us? Sure, but I do understand there'd be a lot of efficiencies and improvements to have those two systems connected together that would be more robust for the residents of our community.
Mr. Healy?
Well, we contract with you. You are actually the entity that runs it, so I don't know, I still don't understand why it would be any more or less efficient. You're the one that runs, it used to be running their operation for them, just like you run for us. And if somebody else wanted to come onboard another county and contract with you, your entity, Ardent Solutions, they could do that also. I don't have much of an appetite. I agree with Mr. Fant and myself. You know, I would like to see you get this going over there on your own, Cataragus County, and I wish you all the luck, and I hope it becomes successful for both yourself as a county entity and for your citizens, but I can't support it. Thank you.
Gwen?
So, just a couple of things. When you start to think about, you know, whether Cat County would wanna contract with Ardent, you know, not that that isn't a potential, right, but the way that I kinda look at it is, this would be an extension of our current Allegheny County system, which would really eliminate double doing every single thing that we have to do right now for DOT. So, our annual reports, our quarterly reports, our grants, everything that happens on the backend, that that's what we're working on on a daily basis, which is a lot. There's, when you get into grants, you know, most of us have experience with it. There's a lot of requirements behind that. So, I think for, one of our thoughts on it, as the mobility managers, we could incorporate everything that we already have and extend everything that we already have. We would not have to do everything twice.
Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. I generally support what the request that's being made to us. I think that it makes sense to have an overall efficient transportation system along the southern tier. Actually, other counties might be, and the future might be interested. But, so, as I understand it, it's not really gonna cost Allegheny County anything. Tax, our taxpayers aren't gonna be paying any more than they already are. So, and the benefits of not having to operate two separate, for you guys to operate two different systems, one for Cataragus County and one for Allegheny County, which seems to be very inefficient. And for the ridership, I think it would be a vast improvement. So, I generally support it, as long as it's not costing the Allegheny County taxpayers any more. I see no objections. And obviously, I think there's some advantages. So, from my perspective, I think it's, it seems like a good idea.
Thank you. Sir? Jack?
I think that there is an assurance on the part of Cataragus County that we will, we agree with that, and this is not an intent to create any type of financial burden at all upon Allegheny County. So, that would be something that we would certainly agree with on, you know, in relationship to your concerns.
Yeah, I can just give you a little bit of experience, and I could ask our treasurer to speak to this, but when we started out, we were not supposed to have any extra costs. This was a pass-through process as Allegheny County. Once you get in the system, and this would be the same with you with Cataragus County, if you take this system over and expand it, you'll find that probably like we did, hopefully not, but it's not as uncomplicated as it seems. So, we spent some money upfront to keep it going, because once you're committed, you got the DOT involved, and they want you to keep it going, and I'll tell you what, our people that have been running this system have done a fantastic job compared to what it was when they first started out. So, there's a learning curve. So, I would suggest that there are consultants out there that will advise you on how your system is and what you need to do to upgrade it. But I think the thing that I really would like to see, a system, if you could get a combined system, it'd be great. I just think that Cataragus County needs to step up, the same as we did, and say, whatever we need to do to keep the system going, and if you want to expand it, we're willing to take a look at that. But it's, you can have two systems that are actually integrated, with each one being supported by their county that's responsible for it. So, that's, I don't have a problem with a system. I'll just tell you that it's not as rosy as it's portrayed to be. We've been through it, and like I said, Terry could probably give you some real numbers about how much we spent to keep it alive the first two or three years. You girls remember that. I mean, at least Carrie does. And we had a lot of pressure, and they stepped up, and they're doing a great job now. So, I hate to see them get tangled in with a new venture other than as a consultant. I mean, you people know how to run it. You can certainly help them as far as advice, and here's the system, take a look at it. I think it'd be great if you could work together like that. I just do not envision myself supporting a combo type thing. So, I appreciate, I know, you know, we were there many years ago, so, Cataragus County needs to take a serious look at what you've got, and if you want to keep it, step up. We understand that. It's just pass-through money, right? I mean, you know, it's not gonna cost you anything, but it could. So, keep that in mind. Good luck with it, however it turns out. So, thank you.
Mr. Stocken, then Ms. Burdick.
A question, you talk about all the pitfalls. When you were doing all this, can those pitfalls be avoided based on what you know already? I mean, you, you know what I'm saying? Why do those pitfalls have to be there the second time around if you guys already know what they are? I don't know. It just...
So, I think, I wasn't a part of it back then, obviously, I think, but, you know, starting a new system, I think the system is already in place. So, I think you're gonna avoid some of what has maybe happened in the past, right? There's already allocations set aside for Cataragus County. There's already capital in Cataragus County. So, it's not the, yes, there's definitely gonna be bumps, right, because there's a lot of, like, turning of everything over. But I don't think it's going to be any financial type. They have their allocation, they have their partners, they have a pretty good setup. So, it's not the, it's not gonna take time and whatnot, and work, and coming to this board for approvals, and, you know, contracts and whatnot. But it's not starting a brand-new system, and I think that's probably the bigger difference, is that system is already there. It's already functioning, so I think the transition would be much easier overall.
Ms. Burdick, then Ms. Hatchet.
I apologize. I wasn't here for the initial discussion on this, so I just am wondering, and it probably was discussed earlier, but like I said, I wasn't here. Why is Olean ending the contract? Why, what is their reason for not continuing it?
Mayor?
This is fancy stuff for me, so, thank you. What happened was, we had, waiting for, the biggest reason was, we were waiting for almost half a million dollars from the state, DOT, to reimburse us. And it got to be affecting our, not only our budget, but our fund balance also. And we went almost 18 months of getting the reimbursement. And that would have been longer if we hadn't started getting our elected officials at state level involved. So, they, you know, we kept getting the excuses that they changed staff, they, you know, at DOT, they changed staff, they don't, you know, they, I think even at one time, we had to resubmit the paperwork. So, it just got to be, and to, we have our community development office, they run the, they were in charge of the system. It's a two-person office. Carrie Cooper, who was our community development director, and a secretary. And most, a lot of her time is devoted to answer, you know, taking complaints, answering complaints, running the program. So, we just felt the time had come that we could no longer sustain waiting for the reimbursement to come in. So, we elected the common council elected to end the, end the program.
I guess the one thing that I was thinking about when it was first brought to us, it was kind of initially put out there that basically, we would be the bank, you know, we'd get reimbursed, but we'd be the bank. Am I now hearing that Cataragus County is now going to be banking that part and not us?
Thank you. So, I mean, Cataragus County has no expectation to be an economic free rider. We expect that there should be no cost to Allegheny County whatsoever. We've also engaged with the city of Olean as far as subsidizing their situation, at least through this transition period that we're in the middle of. And so, Cataragus County expects to fully pay its bills at absolutely no cost to Allegheny County. And the only reason we're here is, we felt there was a lot of financial synergies, and we felt there was a lot of ridership synergies. And we did have the constraint of the timeline, as well as some of the other considerations I mentioned, but, I mean, you know, basically that's why we're here, and there will be no burden to Allegheny County. I assure you of that.
One other question, I guess this would be for Carrie or Gwen. As you take on this and it expands, because you did mention that you wanted to expand, is you're also taking on a lot more potential problems. You know, there's always problems when you're serving the community and what they need. How are you going to handle that? Are you gonna need added staff? Is that something that will be taken care of?
Yeah, we wouldn't need to add extra staff. I mean, we would have one call center that would go over the whole region. We would add another, kind of Gwen, to the system as well, to capture all the reporting and the capitals and the procurement. But we would apply to, oh, I'm sorry, yes. But we would apply to New York State DOT to get more mobility management funds. So, it wouldn't be a cost to either county to add staff to the mix. But yeah, we anticipate, because we do, we oversee the operator too, as well as all the procurements, the reports, right, the grant writing. We oversee the operators. So, we're doing quality assurance. We're tracking ridership, where people are getting on and off the bus. So, we do a lot of, lot of extra work. So, to answer your question, yes, we would hire another one or two people within the mobility management department, and we would get it through 5311 mobility management monies from New York State DOT.
Do you think there'd be a time period waiting for that?
I don't...
Most likely.
Right. I think we're okay.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say that. I think we're okay. We've had a lot of conversations with DOT, but I think we'll be okay.
Mr. Havy, then Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. I recognize that there's a necessity for good public transportation throughout the southern tier, both in Allegheny, Cataragus, and going into Chautauqua. And it would be a shame for there to be some sort of interruption in the middle of that. I'm understanding that there's no financial burden for Allegheny County. All there is, is our agreement that we support this. And without any financial burden to Allegheny County, and for the good of the order, I think I could support this. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes?
So, if this were to be approved, you've got a system in Cataragus County, that's, I'm talking about employees and ownership of the buses, et cetera. Would the current contracts continue as is, or would there be any problems between the two?
So, we've talked to DOT a little bit about this, like the capital equipment, as far as like the buses, they would be turned over. We would try to extend the contracts that are currently in place, just to keep the system running for now. And then, once I think we go to, you know, put our contract back out to bid, our contract would then change to include these other routes. So, we would still, eventually, we would get it back under one contract, just to make it easier for everybody. I will say that we do have some concern, because we, both systems currently use the same third-party operator, and if Oats no longer holds that contract with them, we have a lot of shared expenses between the two contracts. So, we do feel like this, you know, could help us in those contract negotiations, hopefully. But essentially, the, I would say probably the buses are the biggest capital equipment, and they would come as part of the system through New York State DOT.
Mr. Dummick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you forget your question?
No, I just wanted to say that you guys do a very good job, as most of us know. It's a well-oiled machine. My concern was, kinda goes on to what Mr. Barnes said about your contract, and if you have any concern with a positive or negative going forward with like with first transit contract.
Well, I think that, so, Oats already looked at the contract that just came out for them with their third-party operator, right? And they have, they eliminated one of the routes that didn't have high ridership in order to get their contract down. So, I think that that's a great start overall. I don't want to sit here and say that we don't have any concerns. Of course, we have concerns, right? Like, it's, it was a tough process for us, so I don't foresee that being any easier, but we're gonna go through it no matter what. So, I do think it gives us a little bit of leverage. You know, we'll have some more buses, some more routes, some more miles, and obviously, more ridership. And I will, just one thing I wanted to say that I forgot in our last meeting. I know I did show you the ridership graph, but if you didn't look at the numbers closely, which it was hard to see, we will do over 50,000 rides on public transit in Allegheny County just this year alone, so...
Mr. Fant?
Yeah, it's kind of, it was presented to us that, you say there's no cost to Allegheny County, but we've already heard the fact that sometimes you're waiting for your money. And we've been through that situation where we waited for our money. So, my concern is, is if we're piggybanking this thing, which is what has been indicated to us in a prior meeting, I know Cat County's stepped up for the, till the end of the year, but after that, if this, if this thing goes into effect, you say it's no cost. But when we tie up fund money that we can invest, which is, you're talking about a considerable amount of money, right, Terry?
Could be.
It could be, and it, you know, it has been over the past. So, is it true? Do you want us to use us as a piggybank, or how does that work out?
We do not expect Allegheny County to front a dollar. No money. It would come from us. If you have a shortfall, whatever our costs are, we would expect to put that forward. Allegheny County will not have one dime for what Cataragus County's obligations are.
So, if I may, Dwight, there's a, and maybe you can help me, Mayor. There's a reserve account in place, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and the number I'm hearing is 200,000, thereabouts? If...
About 189,227 dollars.
So, a good start, but probably not sufficient to cover any, any delays in our claims. But maybe that's the solution, Dwight, is to say, okay, let's beef up that reserve account. I don't know the mechanisms for sliding that reserve account under our umbrella, Terry's. I'm thinking about something else right now, but if you, if you established a reserve account with funds from the entities that are, maybe it's not just the county, maybe it's the county and the city, maybe it's the county, the city, and the other partners that could cover that, you know, whatever it is, we would be obligated to float while we're awaiting our claims. Would that alleviate your concern in that regard?
I think that will all have to be hashed.
I think that will all have to be hashed out if you decide to go forward with it. It'll have to be some kind of a contract, it'll have to be, you know, logistics about if we pay a bill, are we then going to build Cat County so that they're paying, and we wouldn't have to keep a reserve in our books, it would be on their books, they'd keep money for the bus transportation. And, you know, there's many ways I think we can do it. You know, you don't want to complicate it so much that it's complicated for years, you want to make it as simple as possible. If we pay bills for a Cat County line, then do we just build Cat County and they reimburse us? You know, is that reimbursement just flipped? You know, it wouldn't be like waiting for the state to reimburse us, it would be the next county. You know, it wouldn't be that, I wouldn't think that would be that difficult. If Cat County's agreeing to pay for the cost, then we'd work it out in an agreement with them. We're going to have to have some kind of an agreement with them anyway. So if you decide to do that, there's going to have to be some written document that you guys are going to have to approve, Cat County's going to have to approve all of that, so.
I think there's ways to work it out. I don't really know, right off the top of my head, what's the best way to work it out?
So, I apologize, I should have done at the beginning of the meeting, but for our guests at the back table there, just speaking, it's County Treasurer Terry Ross, to her right, it's County Attorney Allison Carroll, to her right, it's County Administrator Chris Annett, not sure the guy next to her. To Terry's left, there's our IT Director Keith Hooker, and that's our County Clerk Rob Christman.
Mr. Healy?
Yes, well, for the most part, I've heard that we don't expect, we don't intend for there to be extra expenses or burden on Allegheny County from both Arden and Cataragus County. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not against the transportation going forward in Cataragus County, but I would dare say they probably got tentative plan, a backup plan already started, and they aren't waiting just for us to vote or not. What amounts towards it, I think it's easier for both Arden, easier for Cataragus County, for Allegheny County, just to do it. And, you know, and Arden's a separate entity. We contract with Arden, taking contact with Arden. I see no, I actually see no need for Allegheny County to, you know, be involved. And however Arden wants to set up, it went set up anyways between the two counties. So I don't see the difference.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
The reporting that you have to do to the State DOT, or whoever you report to, by combining the two together, I would assume would be some efficiencies, not having to send in two separate, completely different reports, as opposed to sending in one report and keeping the state. How about, have you communicated with the state as to the consideration of this happening? The Allegheny County kind of overtaking the existing situation? And do they, are they in favor, or do they indicate that that would make, make sense from their view?
Yeah, the politically correct statement, they say it's a local decision. But they do see the opportunity and the benefits to have those two, the two systems joined. And, you know, we can track things separately. I mean, we can report what happens in the old system versus us. Ideally, we'd be to join them all together into one system, but we could be reporting and separating and tracking a little bit different. The other thing is, right now, Allegheny County's going through a triennial review, and it is, Chris and Allison, those could probably contest that it's a bear, right? It's, there's a lot to it. If we had one system, it would be a lot easier. So there's a lot of, again, work that goes on, that would be totally improved and efficient if we could just do it as one.
So comparing the Cataragus system versus our system, number of buses, number of employees, and what's, what, what is the difference?
Yeah, so, and I would love the mayor, I don't want to speak for him either, but I think for us, comparison-wise, they, they around the city of Ole'An, but they now go out to, they have this contract with St. Bonaventure, can't even talk, St. Bonaventure, and they go as far as Salamanca in their system. So ours goes countywide, and then the Seneca Nation does go north. So there's great opportunity there. There's also opportunity, if these systems were joined, that we could look at other places the system could go collectively. When you're looking at Franklinville and the, and the new cheese plant there, is there opportunity to look at employment, healthcare, older adult living facilities? We could, not overnight, but we could really look at how can we maybe tweak the system to really reach more residents and more geographic area between the two counties. So we're not duplicating each other, we're meeting up more efficiently, and then having other hours that we can, that we can do more.
But what I'm getting at is, the number of buses and employees, and drivers, or whatever else, how many are there in the present Ole'An system versus, and how many are there in the Allegheny County?
So it's comparable, but we do do way more miles than Ole'An.
I'm talking about equipment and employees.
Yeah, so I think they're running five buses, and we are running five buses. We have seven in our fleet, I don't know what their extra fleet is, off the top of my head, so it's, it's comparable.
And the employees are all transdev, first transit. So it's all under, we have this, we share the same operator for that. And then I think other staff was Carrie Cooper, right, with the mayor's office under the development, and then they had an outside consultant that also was very part-time to help them as well.
I just wanted to take an opportunity also to talk about the partnership. We've, we've mentioned that repeatedly, and I just want to, you know, talk specifically about who those partners are. So under the current system that we have, we have the city of Salamanca that's contributing funds into the mix. We have Cataragus County Department of Social Services contributing into the mix. St. Bonaventure University is also contributing toward the transportation system. In tandem, which is our, our local rehabilitation center, and the Seneca Nation of Indians. Seneca Nation of Indians, in part, not only provide access east to west, through their, their partnership agreement, east to west, but they also have a transportation system that goes north to south within Cataragus County, connecting the two reservations in the county. So there's an interrelationship between all of those. We've come together with the leadership of the city of Ole'An, and that is, when we talk about our partnership, those are the people that we are bringing to the table, those are the people that are, are bringing money to the table to help sustain the system.
Ms. Burdick?
We've heard all the reasons to do it, are there any reasons not to do it? Is there any negatives? I mean, I've, I've just heard a lot of good things, but I haven't, there's got to be something that's negative for Allegheny County here. Maybe not.
Maybe the back table, not, I'm not saying negatives or trouble, but maybe you could talk about some of the concerns you have about it?
My concerns are only that we have a lot of other projects going on, and, you know, we each only have so much capacity and wavelength to manage them all. And Arden does a beautiful job with this project, but it's still a lot of time on the back tables and working with Arden, with our current system. I can imagine this will probably be a little bit more time, too. We could, we can handle it, but that would be my only concern, is that it's just another big project, and we're in the middle of a lot of big projects.
How about you, Terry?
Administration of the whole thing. Not that it, again, it's not doable, it's just a lot of work. Are we going to have to keep it separate? Are we going to have to combine it all? We spend a lot of time every month on phone calls with Arden to run our transportation. What's it going to take to do? I'm assuming this would be some kind of an extension to our system, not necessarily a separate system. But I don't know how that's going to work administratively. You know, I'm the one that sits in there now. I mean, it's very time-consuming. Carrie, they do a lot of reports, we have to do a lot of reporting with different requirements that are, you know, like the MWBE requirements and all of that, grant, you know, filling out all those grants and everything, but, you know...
Extra staffing?
It's, well, we can always use extra staff, Michael. But, and I don't know if we'd have to put on another staff member, but we'd have to figure it out. So, I mean, doable, yes. Do we have the time today? Probably not, but can we make it work? If that's what you guys choose to do, we'll make it work the best we can.
Let me check in on Ms. Carroll first, before we go back to the board. Okay.
Chris and Terry have already expressed what my, my concerns, and then just, of course, the additional legal work that would entail. My office is already understaffed. Again, can we get it done? Absolutely. But it may take, it may not happen as quickly as everyone would like. And my goal is to get things done quicker.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Healy then Mr. Fallon?
I was just going to suggest that, I don't know if we want to have a, 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 a term of client session after, at the end, or something like that, because I expect there might be some liability issues or other issues that we might want to talk about, not in an open forum, but the, so I'm just throwing that out there. It's up to you, be your best judgment.
Who needs lunch? Dwight then Gretchen?
I guess that's my concern. I mean, it would be, I, I see the picture, but I know what Terry's had to go through, and what she goes through in dealing with all the grant money and all the rest of the stuff. So there's, there's built-in costs that you're not depreciating at this point, and we, we suck it up. So it would be fantastic, but I, for us to think that we, we would be the piggybank, I guess that's what we're saying. I know you're saying we, we won't lose any money, but if we're tying up money now, there's maybe a way to work that out. I mean, maybe Cat County has decided that they're, they're willing to put the money up to keep it going. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, unequivocally.
So, is, is it more of a management-type situation that we're having a problem with as far as your system that you have now, is that...
I mean, I'll just speak to your concern. I mean, you know, when, when we started this process, Jack had had some discussion with transportation consultants, and they mentioned the synergies, they mentioned the ridership, they mentioned the routes, and they say, you know, if you do it as one piece, you can put a better deal together for both entities. And so, do we want to run a transportation system? The answer is no. Will we run this? If the board says no, we're going to get started. You guys tell us no, we're getting started today, and we'll put it together ourselves, and we'll make it work, and we'll put a financially better model together than, you know, the best financial model together we can versus the current system. So we're willing to do that. We just thought it made sense for the synergies, for the ridership, and if you take all your administration, I mean, I'm a business person, you put your overhead over two systems rather than over one system, you're going to get better economies of scale. So that was our rationale. And once again, I do not expect, our legislature does not expect Allegheny County to front one dime to make this go. Personnel, that is its own issue, and that is probably something we can't do anything about. But as far as the money, there's no issue.
Well, that would be, I mean, that would be my, my main concern, is the responsibility of it and the, the money part. So it's good to hear that, that you folks are willing to step up with, with the money. So what, what needs to happen is we need to have some kind of language and all that stuff that protects both parties. I mean, we, my concern is, is that we get into this thing without having the i's dotted and the t's crossed, because I don't want to get Allegheny County into a situation, or our system that we already have that's running very well, into a situation where we, we really are going to be struggling again to where it was before. So, so it's encouraging to hear that, that Cat County's legislators have said, hey, we want to keep the system going. How do we do it? And so, that's my point. Show me the language, show us the language, show us the money. And I, I think if, I, if we get the i's dotted, the t's crossed, I would not be totally opposed to it, as long as Cataragus County has now said that, yeah, we'll, we'll be responsible, okay? That's what you've said. So, so I appreciate that, and I, I leave it to Terry to get all of our money.
We're breaking them down, folks. Okay, Gretchen then Depp.
The one question that I have too, you know, when listening to the back table example, legal issues, is that something that, if there's some legal issues that are part of the Cat, or Cat County transit system, that your staff could help support that, so it's not falling completely on our staff here?
Absolutely, yes.
So we could probably have legal assistance, and I don't know how you have treasurer assistance, but, I mean, it's kind of two books going together, but, anyway.
I, I already have a good relationship with the Cataragus County attorney.
You do?
I do, yes.
All right, I just wondered if that would be some of the options to help alleviate some of the added stress?
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Ms. Rup?
See if I can remember what I was going to say. It goes out real fast, you know. So I guess what, what I'm hearing here today, you be quiet, Mr. Healy, what I'm hearing today is some big concept for more of a regional, which makes a whole lot of sense, and I support that. I think we need to start looking regional for a lot of things in our area. But then I, I guess what I'm hearing today also is the concept of putting it together. We're not going to have all the details worked out today, I doubt. This is going to be a very complex one. I would think there might be a couple different scenarios of how this could work, and I would hope that the three entities would come together and maybe come back to it. If, if we agree today that in concept, we like this concept, but we need to work out the details, and put together a work group that can go back and say, okay, here are three, maybe three options of how this thing could work to benefit Cat County, Allegheny County, and Arden Solutions. I don't think we're going to get to the details today. So I'm hearing that a lot of pros and support if we can figure out those details. So can we, like, take it to that and get that, and then go to the next step? I mean, I don't know what your timeline is, I don't know how fast you need to have this done, but it's not going to get done overnight. And I agree, our table, we have a lot of projects. I would hate to harness them with a lot more, when we all want these other projects to get done. But I think we could still move forward with this, if we could just agree maybe in concept, and then come back with some details on how this could work better.
Okay, so thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to backtrack just a little bit, before we answer whether to move forward or not. First of all, I want to say thank you to the back table for everything that you guys have done for transportation. I will say, we are coming off an extremely busy time within transportation. We had our third-party operating contract come up at the end of last year. We're in our triennial review, both are, like, really big projects. We also are procuring a lot of different things that is time-consuming with the treasurer's department, with Chris, with Allison, and all the contracts. I wouldn't say that, you know, I totally agree, it's a ton of work, but my goal, the same as theirs, is to finish these projects and, you know, have them in place and, and not go back to them. We did have some funding available that we needed to spend, we worked really hard on moving those projects forward. So I will say, like, moving forward, we don't have any of those projects. All right, the facility, but, that's big enough, right? But we don't have quite as many as we are working on right now. But again, I just want to say thank you for all of your work, all of your time, effort. You guys have been huge supporters of transportation, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
And to be fair, the chairman just asked what our cons were. We do have a lot of pros for moving forward, too, so I, I would be up for the challenge.
And I want to reassure you, Arden Solution wasn't looking at this like, like this was like our end-all, be-all goal. We were looking at it in the, as the idea of what's best for, you know, our residents. And, and we do, there are a lot of services that are not available here in Allegheny County that our residents do need to cross county lines for. So this isn't a project that Arden is like, oh, let's just take on more work, right? So we want the system be, to be successful, you know, across the board for everybody. And I will also say that we do meet up with the Oats system currently. We do, every now and then, have conversations, make... We do, every now and then, have conversations, making sure that our buses are meeting up at the same time to be able to do transfers. And I will say that we do have a lot of people going, you know, back and forth. I do think it's really important for the residents of this county, even if you take out the consideration of the residents of Cat County, which we would never do, but there is a lot of cross-county ridership going on, so.
Okay.
If the system continues, correct, yes. But we have not, the other thing is, Mike, you had mentioned earlier, you know, we haven't been in contact with Cadda Ardis County as Arden Solutions, as the mobility managers. I mean, our priority is Allegheny County, and that's what we have focused on.
Right, but if they contact with you, there's not going to be any change in the ridership model. Is that correct?
Right, essentially, we could even...
You're going to be running their system, and you're going to be running the one in Allegheny, only we're paying for ours, and they'd be paying for theirs.
Yeah, like, I wouldn't disagree with you. Essentially, we could even make it better if we were overseeing both of them.
Because you run, we don't run, you run.
Correct.
Yes, we can interact with you.
I think, I just want to point out that Arden's main business model, the nonprofit does have business models, is to service Allegheny County, and I believe they don't have any contracts with Cat County currently. So it's not as though you have a relationship with Cat County, that you really are focused on Allegheny County, and that's probably why that would be a very awkward conversation on Arden's part, to be partnered with Cat County. Certainly, Cat County could find a mobility manager of their own, like you said, but it might not be Arden, it could possibly be somebody else.
But they still could interact.
They could interact, and they could offer a proposal, and they could talk about it, but I think it's not as natural a relationship as it is for us to be working with Arden.
Jim.
The timeline appears to be December 31st, because that's when Olian says they're done. Is that a realistic timeline if we decide to do this and get the contracts in place? And what happens if it doesn't happen by the deadline?
So DOT is willing to work with us in whatever capacity needed as far as their end is concerned. I think that probably the third-party operator would be probably one of the first things that we would, you know, need to talk about and figure out if, whether that, if we didn't have to go out to, for an RFP, for a new contract with a third-party operator, I think we could probably do it in that timeline. I think if the third-party operator's not interested in extending, you know, the current contract or keeping the current contract, I don't see why they wouldn't, they just came up with it. You know, there's a lot of variables in there. So the idea would be is to get the main contracts in place and then follow up with everything else.
Yeah, and I think it's to their benefit. I mean, if votes went away, they, I mean, there would just be a ripple effect there. And I think getting the partners that have been on board, you know, around the table and figure out whether they contribute, it would be an aggressive timeline, but we would figure out, again, we have the support of DOT, we could figure out how to get it done with that back table.
So I promised these gentlemen that we'd keep it as close to an hour as possible. Anyone have any questions they need to, do you have a question, Gretchen?
Mostly a comment. From where we started, I am feeling a little bit better that, you know, we're not utilizing taxpayers' money. I think the next hurdle is looking at what kind of shared services so we don't tax our administration team, because I think there probably could be some shared services. And we have more than just transit on our plate right now, we have many other big projects that we're working on right now, too, so that would be helpful.
We probably can share a lot of services, but ultimately, if you move forward this in this model, it's Allegheny County's responsibility to move things forward, and there are things that only we can do, that we could not ask for help from other counties for, but that's okay. We would figure that out.
And in theory, there's way to structure agreements, even if you had to do it solely through these partner agencies to provide administrative support, not actual body support, but financial support for the, to go towards the administration of the expanded system?
I think so. What we're talking about back here are all the steps necessary to get something in front of the governing body to approve a contract, to approve the budget transfers, to make your books correct for the auditors, and there's a lot, there's a lot of funding streams, and it's just a lot of work here, but we manage it, we know what we're doing, we've had a good partnership with Arden, and I'm sure we could take this on.
Okay, so from my vantage point, there's really three camps here among this esteemed board. One is that they're in support of it in concept and prepared to support it, given assurances in contractual agreements and so forth. There's a camp that is opposed to it and is going to remain opposed to it regardless of any assurances. And then, are there any people that feel they need even more information than has been provided so far before they're willing to say, okay, I'm in support of this in concept? Are there any of those people? Okay, so...
Yeah, I just, a question. I'd like to ask our administrative people back here, if they can compile some kind of, how many hours they're spending on supporting the system that we have already? In other words, I know Terry, like she's indicated, and Chris, give me some idea, if they could, about how much time we actually spend on this type of stuff.
Do they include the hours it took them to compile the hours?
Just give me an idea, because I know it takes up time, and now you're going to talk about doubling that time, basically, so...
Arden's contention is that it would not double the time, that there will be a heavy workload standing it up and merging the two systems, but once they're in place, it's going to be, you know, the meeting they have on X, Y, or Z is still going to be, just be one meeting, and the approvals for this or that is still just going to be one board approval. It's not doubling work once it's established. The contention is that it's, you're not doubling your efforts, it's just merged into one request.
And I think how much time depends on what's going on. Like, when we're negotiating the contracts with the operator, we're spending a lot of time. Normally, and if there's not a lot going on, we spend, you know, an hour or two, probably a week. We do have a monthly meeting where we spend a little bit more of that particular week, and the rest is usually through emails. But we did have a whole time where we were very quiet, and we didn't even have the monthly meetings, so that was not a good thing. That's why we started them back up. We like having monthly meetings, we like being progressive with the transportation system, you're going after a lot of grants, a lot of good things are happening. But I would say, in general, a couple hours a week. And keep in mind, we work with Arden on a lot of other things, too, so we do have some cross-conversations and cross-topics going on during those hours.
Ms. Ricky.
Yes, just, as the mayor knows, I'm a Cadda Ardis County boy, to begin with. I worked my whole career there, so I know a lot of Cadda Ardis County legislators, past and present, and my question is, do you have full support of your board to use whatever money's needed for this year and moving forward, even from all the ones up north who aren't crazy about the bus system?
The one from furthest north is me, and we have full support, yes.
If you would indulge me, I would like to poll the board to gauge support for moving forward. By show of hands, who are those that are willing to, in concept, currently support the merger of the two systems?
Yeah, in concept, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. What I told Mr. Burr, and it turns out the same is maybe true in Cadda Ardis County, every once in a while, people change their mind around here, but that's a fairly strong majority, Mr. Chairman. I think as long as this board feels as though it has the legal and financial protections that have been expressed, those concerns, I think it's largely due to how much we have confidence in Arden, that I think we're prepared as a county to move forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time, and I do sincerely appreciate your willingness to consider this.
And I do want to thank you, gentlemen and ladies from Arden, for making the trip today. I think it was worthwhile. I think we got some questions answered and hashed some things out, and we certainly appreciate it. I'm trying to think of what service we could dump off on you guys in exchange. I've got a couple in mind, but we'll talk about that later. Not the SS, not the SS. Yeah, transfer stations, that's where, there we go. If there's nothing else, we're going to cut these guys loose, and why don't we, can we adjourn for about three minutes, and then we've got two quick items, so we can get these folks out of here, and then we've got two quick items, a public session, not a big deal, and then we'll adjourn for lunch. Does that sound good? Okay.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the invitation to be here today, and if you have any questions of me, you can just call me in my office.
Thanks, ma'am.
And John did work for us, well, he was employed by us. No, he was, John was a good worker.